Yeah, it's on. Good to see you. All right. And I can call this meeting in the overall order. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Glad to see everybody getting their attendance here again. First order of business and tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Everybody have a chance to read your minutes?
Yep.
Any corrections? No? Give a motion.
I'll recommend the approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Recommended approval of list of claims for July 2020. Any questions or any complaints? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Give a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To accept the financial statements for the general liquor wash fund.
Motion tabled.
I'll second.
Motion tabled. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, could I say something about the financial statement for the general fund?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that we have gotten our current half of our tax payments, and we were sort of worried at first whether people were going to be delinquent or not during these times, but we actually got more than half. So that's a good thing. We got the first half of our LGA, and our corporate tax proportion were $1,200 higher than we had budgeted, and then we got the regular transmission funds, which were $15,800 more than budgeted, and then we got the CARES Act funds of $44,250. So we're sitting better than we thought that we would at this time.
Yeah, well, I think we had that conversation. I appreciate that for everybody. It's all good news. You had the collections for everything and some additional state funding, so thank you. Did we go on? Yeah, did we go on table? Table? Yeah, we tabled, but we go on COVID-19 and CARES update information. Cheryl, can you share that with us?
Um, yeah, just a little bit of update in the county. So now, as of today, we're a Q-Lab positive test of 83. The last month's meeting, we were at 24 Q-Lab tests. So obviously, we're rising a little bit higher than we were before, but it seems to be flat to the top. There've been 1.2 million tests done in the state of Minnesota, and the testing rates for the state are like 1.7% positive. For the Kitchin County, they're 4.25% positive. So we're under the positive rate of the state. And the next thing is the Kitchin County Small Business Relief Fund program is underway. They reported that 15 applications have been received with one regular business applying. And then this, I think it's under calendar, but the committee meets again on August 18th at 1:00, and if you can't make it, we'll burn the alternative alternate.
I get the message. We know we're already.
Okay.
Was there only one business from here that applied?
So far, yes.
Okay, the next order of business, recommend approval of Reverend 2020-07, CARES Act expenditures. That's where we read through your pamphlets, so we disperse 10% of our money to the relief fund. We have a list of all expenses, and we still have a little half of it.
I'll make a motion and we approve Resolution 2020-07.
I'll second.
Give a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The next one is Dean Brink was going to come here, and he was going to present the county with the update in 2020, and he wanted to know if we could participate in some of the activity expanded broad. I looked at the plans, all pretty much, yeah, but he also added a complete overlay from starting at Big Dick when the state ended, all the way, basically distributing for the city mall there and then around the corner. Before, it was going to start at the railroad tracks and go around the corner, the overlay. This is a mill overlay, and I know we were having some breaking stuff by the park and some holes and stuff, so that's going to be great. He is going to have requests to help pay for some of this overlay.
Just a little bit to the...
Yeah, you know, help pay basically for all the same project knowledge that has been captured in the city, and I totally consider that. I think, oh, I can use that, that's proof for your, that's what it's about. And I think, you know, they've come in really good, and I think it's an unusual request myself. It just happened to be bigger than what you want, but then, not much.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Okay, we talked about First Street here.
Yes.
Because when Todd and I went to the company, we had the drawings there, and I left mine there because we didn't have another one.
Could you talk to your microphone so I can hear the place pop? Do you have to pull it out?
Well, can you put your mask up? I can.
We went to the county meeting, and we proposed it, and I thought we were talking like $225,000. And now I look at it, and it's over $1 million. I'm just wondering where all the changes took us.
You know, that's their project, asking for the first part. One big part that they brought is they're adding this mill overlay from the tracks to the thing. That's probably my count, is the biggest single portion of it, and that's their estimate. I'll wait and see how it comes in. Of course, it's all county state aid, so they're putting the mill, we're not. But they did ask if we could help pay for this piece of overlay, or they're going to request, they haven't yet. So we'll just have to see. I don't know where all the changes come in yet, as they just estimated costs on that I myself thought it was pretty extensive myself, but again, we'll wait and see. They're going to solicit bids shortly, but construction will be, from what he's telling me now, there's still an issue with some power hole or something, so probably get the bids now, and if they're accepted, then for early next spring construction. I wonder if sure it's what it do. We can at least get the bids, it'll be the number one. He told me it's their number one project, but you know, budgets go, so I'd like to see bid and get it on construction. Yes.
With the, if you couldn't blacktop along here, the speed, not to put it at work, because we know everybody likes to speed along here, the speed, people like to hit it down. Yeah, blacktop, people already like to hit it down with that. So I think it's a need to consider about speed limit along here, and I know it's really hard because it's county law.
For what doing, you know, Todd is almost regular on this, and he basically will call the sheriff and watch it and work for three, four months, and then all of a sudden, they're back to doing it again.
Right.
So I think it's a constant call, we can always speed them, but kids are bad kids.
And we see whose speeds are not, you know, in the beginning. I think maybe somebody should remind the people that work at the customs and the railroad there to watch their speed too, because a lot of them are those, you know, Sienna and the customs, they have their nice vehicles, and once they hit this here, they put it down.
Well, again.
And they got a blacktop on there, and oh my God, no, they're going to have to leave their tracks.
I know what you're talking about, better road, faster speed, so we can move on to that, and that's a bubble call we can do.
I understand that.
These are tickets, you know.
I think the next step, actually, would be to start knocking, asking our state legislators, our local state legislators, start talking to them, like maybe write a letter and say, hey, why don't you come and look at this? Come and have a cut, and let my dad and watch it. It's, I mean, you got the white trail there, you got people walking, you got kids playing in the park, and they told me, I don't tell anymore, that the state said they wouldn't put no four-way stop there unless somebody got hurt, or there was a bad accident, and we better hope it's not someone else. We've been trying for this for, what, five years?
Yes.
You know, where we have the white lines over by the park, does the traffic have to stop there if you're walking in front of it?
There's both of those.
Yeah, they never do. I walk it every day, and they don't have me over.
But that's something I think we need to look at. Maybe send some letters to...
I think you're right. We can send them a letter to the county board, saying that I think we have to monitor this a little closer. You know, there is a very pedestrian crossing, there are excessive speeds and...
Well, it's also a kid's park. I mean, kids are, it's a matter of home safety. I mean, I don't want some kid to be killed.
Like I say, pick your reason, anyone is good enough, so I think we'll try to do that, and it's a constant, and you just have to...
I'm, well, if you're a toddler, wherever you're going, and they have the remote radar set up, the bright lights are nice to see that, so maybe that...
Well, we were trying to think, maybe we could talk to two children and see if we could just borrow it or give them money just to rent it or something, because they're way expensive, but I don't oppose that. But I think it works, a bunch of people in their mind.
That everyone, I know, right there by the Boise scales, he's setting up there all the time, and you see it, and as soon as you see it, you check his speedometer, so I don't know, the county is...
No, that's the city.
It's a city? Or maybe it comes from nearby.
All they got to do is start stopping a few, and they don't have to give tickets, they give a warning, and once it's lived, it's off, it's all gone.
Either that, they got a shared car they're not using, just bring them down here and park it there.
Well, we'll address it. We'll send some letters, but it's also a good idea, but I know it's a, but things bring them down, we know that. As soon as we get a better road, we definitely want a better road, but at the same time, we have to...
Maybe say...
What comes with it? Recommend approval denial of the sales tax forfeit, of the sales tax forfeit parcels.
Are these the parcels that are sourced from the local area?
Yeah. Fill me in on that, will you share parcels or...
I don't remember all these ones, they were, I thought they were the ones across the street from Stevie and Burgers place.
One of the parcels, yeah, there's a couple of them that are apart across from Stockset, and it's, and then it would be east of the Wallanders, right? You're right about it. So, yeah, right on Highway 11, and it's a tree area, that's, whatever the tree is next to it, that rushing between Wallanders and theirs, and those are the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 lots. There are two lots that are sort of buried in way back in behind the Kellers.
And so what are we asking, to recommend the approval for sale or...
Yes, we, the council has to recommend that the county sell them, unless the city wants to keep them for a specific public purpose.
Okay.
And, yeah, the public purposes are real specific, like roads or public parks or utilities or different things like that, so...
Are you familiar with any of these properties?
Yeah.
Are there any value to the city as far as utility expense, anything like that?
No, sir, I don't know. For us to do something along that area there for a park, something for kids, then there's nothing there. Not too close to the highways.
I think that's swampy in that area too.
Yeah, without a Kellers, it's a snowmobile trail back there. It's like that, so can we get a recommendation on that?
I'll make a motion and we approve Resolution 2020-08.
I'll second.
We have a recommendation in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Jen, we have the register report. Is Jen here?
Yeah.
So I see you got the doors open again.
Yes, everybody's back inside now.
Remember, the month of July was only outside, they did really good.
And with the heat, that was, you know, very hot, but they survived.
And November, and November 1st, and I think they did good.
That's for sure. I mean, we told them last year, the 4th of July celebration, things like that, and actually, the doors were closed inside for...
Three weeks, or more than that now.
Half the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, half the time, so, yeah, I mean, still showing positive, and that's great. It wasn't 15, 16...
Now, the doors are still open?
As of yesterday, yes.
All of the stuff?
Yes.
Have you seen any increase in children at doors or...
Uh, well, no, because I just started it yesterday, so I'm hoping by this weekend or long.
Like I said, everybody's still paying attention to COVID regulations and that.
For the most part, yes.
It's up to you guys, you're there all the time, 24/7, tell your patrons, ask them or anything, but remind them that it's...
Right.
Everybody's heard. Any questions?
You know, we have the seating outside, and we have the inside, is there still a limit of how many people we can have there, even though there's...
No, there's inside, outside, two different things.
Yeah, so I can have, with my fire marshal limit, I can have up to 30 people inside, but I can have 50 outside, so...
Part of those tents that, you know, that carry the package, the tents, you know, the awnings and that, they run through, you feel that the state's pay, I reckon, for five years, and that, so tell them that possible. Good recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation. I'll second.
We have a recommendation, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. What are the big issues this month?
Quiet, grass is slowing down, so we're able to get the county and catch up on putting some new culverts in and ditching and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I know, since the county worked with you, and we dug that ditch from where the state, you know, the First Street.
Yeah, from First Avenue to East Avenue.
Any knowledge that we pick all the way to the culvert so that they can, then the company can help you, you know, down there together.
Yeah, we have quite a bit more too. We're going to do some more on 21, down by the Austin stuff, get some, there's some pipes that need to be replaced, just to get things to flow a little better in the spring months.
We're going to add some water lines.
Yeah, and then we did water lines, we did a service line for John Hopkins, which is down County Road 20, a couple hundred feet there, and then did a case under County Road 46 by Lab Kazinsky's for Mark Uziak. They're ready to go, just a matter of getting the ski bar back to do the connections to the main, and then we'll add three more customers on City Water.
Just make sure that when you need it, and they restore it right away, and that too, so...
Yes.
Did you have any love with security managers?
No, they gave it away, and I could not get them from them. They gave them to the traffic club.
And the traffic club refuses to give them away?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call that, keep them get them.
Are we mowing 130, the...
Yeah, we are. Yeah, I'm going to do, I did get a little more black dirt over there, there's some spots that are still spotty that I'm going to fill in if they're a little grassy, just to make the homeowners happy.
Did we get all the fresh rock done?
Yeah, we did all the shoulder up and around, going both sides on it, on the top of the hill, we kind of spent a day.
A little bit of rain began, and it's really starting to come, and reseeding of the 130 really helped with the fertilizer, and we got a little rain and the weather started.
Just a few spots, it's not coming, and we'll get it.
Okay, anything else for now?
I can't think of anything, guys.
Thanks, Jen.
Right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chairman.
Could I just say, Nick took care of some bad weed problem that my little niece has had on the property over there, the other side town, now they don't live here, so they haven't been monitored, like it was a wild, what is it?
Parsnitz.
Yeah, wild parsley. Yeah, so I might be more than willing to rein this, say, for the time that those had, it was a danger to the neighborhood and to the city right away now as well. I think it was really spreading fast.
I've seen that in the meeting, I mean, in the pamphlet there, did they address it themselves, or did we have to the county to pay?
I mean, what, John? No, Nick and the guys noticed it, and took it down with the bar cat.
Okay, yeah, if they don't handle it themselves, and the county do, it was $179, $129 or something.
Well, they're going to use some sort of spray, they just mow the burgomans down with the bar cat. Yeah.
Well, anything we can do to help with weeds and parsnips, I see it's rampant over there, some of the county roads, I see they're spraying, so we can do any control after that stuff, those actually like poison ivy and some of it, so...
Has still anything growing right now?
Excuse me, is there a certain time that you shouldn't start cutting that? Does it flourish, or is it spraying, you cut it? Is there a certain time that you shouldn't cut it?
You know, I'm not familiar with that, but I know the county is, right now, has the program out where they're spraying it, and they seem, last year, they started about the same time, right around the 1st of August. I see them along the county roads, I don't know when the good time...
Say this spray in August.
But also, I want to keep the cuts, so it doesn't fall, right?
Keep the cuts, so...
Yeah, keep the cuts going forward, and obviously, nobody came to all the right ways they have in the back slopes and all that stuff. Okay, moving on, then we have this recommendation for the RFP, Snowballing Services.
Who's RFP?
Russell Bitts.
Okay.
Yes, for Snowballing Services, for, I hear they're listed in all the liquor stores, some of the alleyways, everything all listed, so...
I'll recommend that we put all the bids for Snowballing Services in the second.
That recommendation, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, Nick and Todd just thought we should do that, because it's been the same since I've been there for six years, you know, see if someone else is interested, and get a better price and those sort of things.
I don't know who was doing it last year, but I know Nick had to come and clean up the alley because they didn't do that very, that good of a job.
You know, is this basically on an hourly basis, or is it so much for each time, Cheryl?
Well, the person that's doing it now is charging it on a per, like, area basis, and I would like them to be charged on an alley basis. Like, he'll charge $20 to do this alley, $20 to do that alley, and in the end, it seems like it, it seems to me like it should be alley, I don't know, but maybe I'll, I'm potentially, maybe I'll go.
Well, hopefully, they'll get more than one bid or several bids, and then we can analyze, and we can make it clear to them what we expect, you know, and obviously, we got to monitor, so we'll see who turns in the bid. Okay, I'd recommend noxious weed control, I'll probably have a motion on that.
Yeah, and this, maybe Mike should know what this is too. Sorry, I got off on a stunt on this agenda this time, but the property that's owned by Advantage Development, the 20th property, the county wants to spray that, and that'll be late August or early September, and so we had sent letters to Advantage Development Corporation, and, you know, to say that they need to fix this, or, you know, else, we're going to have, the county's going to do it, and they're going to have to pay 25% of the cost, and the guy never responds anyway, because I don't even know what is that, you know, anyway, it's the address that the Secretary of State has.
He's in Taiwan.
He's in Taiwan. So in the end, what will happen is that we'll get the county to spray that, you know, that big field, and they'll assess the property taxes with $175, and also, Nick and the guys have mowed it like four times this year too, so at least we can get, you know, recoup some of the, some of the money for doing, to take care of this property, always.
I think that's what you want to handle, Cheryl, but you notify them, if you don't do it, you'll have to hire the county or do it yourselves, whatever, just put the bill in, so it's against, against the property taxes, and eventually, they'll probably end up in the tax forfeit, whatever, so what people have to satisfy in the beginning.
It's a case of, you're trying to fight for it, I mean, you have to...
When you go to have some of them, no matter what, so you just have to go ahead and hire the county or whoever, and then put it against the property.
Can I get a question on that?
I'll recommend with the noxious weed control, second?
That recommendation, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. Okay, do you have any questions? The variance for the rear yard setback rules submitted for 3477, that's what I was going to talk, we had a little gate, like, well, yeah, we'll do it in the back, we had discussions with Will, and any setback issues there, or anything?
No, still going to have 11 feet between the...
If you made the setback rules, why are the variance written?
Because we're on the corner lot, so if Fred and that area want to build, they only need a 10-foot setback, because we're on the corner lot, they consider that our back of the house and front house, and if you're in the back of the house, you're supposed to have a 35-foot setback, where there's only 29 feet between our houses.
Okay. And I read it, I couldn't see what you needed, but if you do, I think we'll check with your neighbor, there'll still be 11 feet left, Fred will have the median, and he had a problem. I know we have one other issue where they consulted with their neighbor, they're building right next to the property line, I think we'll discuss that, maybe I'll consult you to another issue, but I want to get a little more detail on that, but anyway, we have a request here.
I'll make a motion and we approve his own, Charles.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, we had some planning, zoning issues here in the commission map, and I've read through everything on the update, one, we had a request on the fire issue, and I see you recommend that DNR has control of ready fires and burning events and anything else Maybe Will will be, you can just, for the audience and for everybody, go through what the commission, or, thank you.
Joanne is a council member, but she's gone today, and I'm one of the committee members, so we talked both about the fire pits and the fireworks.
Can you talk to her?
I thought I talked to her. We discussed, and we decided and brought to the council that we think that, as a small community, that if you have an issue, you should go to your neighbor first, and it's really fireworks and the fire pits, if you can't solve it with your neighbor, then we just recommend calling the sheriff, because we can't, we have no way to enforce, if we do an ordinance on fireworks and a fire pit within so many feet of your property, how would Rainier endorse it or enforce it? We would have no way, who are they going to call if they don't?
You know, let me, if you've got a fire pit in your yard, then every time you use it, or you do it like seasonal, and you've got to follow the recommendations, that, you know, put a burning band on, and is that...
Well, the reason why it was brought up to us is because at the last council meeting, there was a complaint on a resident that had it too close to a fence, so our recommendation is if you would bring it up with your neighbor, try to settle it yourselves. And the DNR has, I mean, we'd have to follow the rules, all residents should be following the DNR rules, whether they can have a fire or not.
But couldn't we still put restrictions on how far it's got to be away from a fence or garage or...
Absolutely, the zoning committee just did... Absolutely, the zoning committee just didn't choose to do that. We thought, we didn't know how we would enforce it, number one. If we did that and a, and a resident didn't follow the rules, who would they call? That was our question, right?
Yeah. Well, also, you know, when any issue, when you say you can call the DNR or something too, I know you can get a burning permit. A burning can immediately prove for a certain amount of time, but.
Well, a burning permit is used before when you're in a big, um, brush fires and stuff. But if you've got a self-contained fire rate, you shouldn't be burning garbage in it. You should have it situated in your yard immediately for yourself, not right next to a fence or next to a driveway or next to the wall. Or anything, I mean, that's obvious.
Yeah, I understand that, so. Okay, but what else?
The other thing was fireworks. Um, there was complaints about fireworks in the city. We also, the same thing, that they're illegal, number one. Rainier has no way to enforce them if people are having fireworks, and they're dangerous to residents. Talk to your neighbors and if not, call the sheriff, because they are illegal. And how would we enforce it if we made an ordinance for it?
Yeah, we'd have to make a ruling on it to enforce it.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, so I, I do again, it's standing, you see fireworks, you know, we may have a ruling, but we're gonna take the same action. It's already out there, someone's gonna call the cops and that's, that's gonna be it, so they may as well do that themselves. I mean, we're starting to come to the zoning commission, and they've already violated the rule, fireworks are illegal. So, we have every right to call the police and, or call the sheriff and take the action on that.
We have the right to say plus. We don't have to worry about the city.
Right, it doesn't pass an special rule, it's inspired groups or anything, we have the option. So, whatever appropriate action, if they're offending somebody, they wanna call the sheriff, that's certainly their prerogative.
If you call the sheriff, who's gonna ask that there's an ordinance against it?
No, he won't, because they're against the law, so they're not gonna ask for a Rainier ordinance, because they're already against the law. They wouldn't need a Rainier ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, well, they're already against the law, he don't have to ask for the ordinance, because they're already against the law. He can pick you up for shooting a fire.
Even if we had an ordinance, the state law would supersede any ordinance that Rainier had.
I thought it, but just like you couldn't shoot out bottle rockets, but regular fireworks, you can use them anytime.
I think it might be the opposite.
All I know is fireworks are illegal, they should get permitted to use them. Pretty clear, you know, they do have occasions, and they'll give you a variance to have a celebration or something. But again, once you have those same problems, and the burning permits and things like that, you have to go through to the permit process with the county, because it is game law.
And then we had one more item, uh, we had one more, we had one more item about mobile food units, but Bralha's pulling in down there. We had a discussion on that, which I think we, or it was a long discussion, and it was referred to the council for approval on doing an ordinance, or do we already have one?
The, the draft.
Yeah, there's a draft one that Cheryl wrote up on, um, with a charge and a license, an application.
They had like degree reordance.
The what?
Degree reordance, I think they call that for peddlers and.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
And I think that's the term they gave it.
Well, we had a wide discussion on it, because there's many food trucks in town, and how you get a schedule, if one wants to come and another one wants to come, so if you have an application and they pay a fee, the bare minimum covering the electric for the city, because they're plugging into the city's electric and picking up their own garbage. All that stuff is all in the application that Cheryl did. And that would have to be approved by the council.
I understand that, so we're saying that these, basically, food vendors are, are we limiting food vendors now? See, that's a degree reordance, and these are vendors, you know, the street, the street vendors, I was just calling out. And they have to have a license, and, uh, and they have to apply for a license here, and whatever, we decide to challenge, and that's it. I think at this time, that would be appropriate, but again, you may, you have a schedule.
What about these people that set up or sell? People that set up their little shops to sell their wares, wallets, you know, all they have, their sundresses. They've all fallen under this too, or?
That's, that's what they follow.
You could be a spank that took a clue, peddlers and all that, if that's what everybody wants.
Right.
That's, right.
And I mean, as far as I know, the only time we have those type of entities are, like, Rainier days are when we have. And we also discussed having different fees, if it's an event we're putting on, do we want to charge them to come if they're just coming for their own? But I would think it would cover them too.
We could have another consultation, we could waive fees, we could waive fees for regular activities or desire.
And that's exactly what we talked about.
But I think if we, you know, keeps the guy coming in to sell corn or whatever they're selling, you know, drinkings, whatever they're selling, if they haven't have a license, then they can come here and buy whatever they think is appropriate, and where they're gonna set up and what do they sell. And, and so it gives you a little bit of knowing what they're selling, where they're selling it.
And if they have a license, for food trucks, they need the license.
And we have a special, that's similar enough, we can immediately waive those fees if you're choosing to do so.
I know the one that's down there now, I'm not gonna say the names, but is, is he on city property and is he hooked up to plugging into our?
That's exactly why we're here, we have to be on there. Yes, he is.
That's, that's where the issue comes in, exactly.
So, we should have a fee for it.
That's, that's.
That's, yeah, that's why we're here. That's why we met up, yes, right.
Why don't we think about it and then, you have what the fee should be, I think, well, first of all, do agreement that there should be a fee? Then, why don't we think about it at our next council meeting, which is, we could now, or?
We also discussed a different timeline, because there's some towns that have, like, you buy a three-day permit for this month, you buy a seven-day permit, all those things.
And that's what, that's what we need to take a recommendation, whenever you guys figure that out, or when you think about it in that, at our next council meeting, because that's exactly right, right? Early license, daily license, like fishing licenses, right?
Yeah. And when you look at the cities across, you know, or the Minnesota smaller cities and things like that, that they would be, it looks like it ranges between like $10 and $50. I think I-Palm's charge is $50. And then, like, a seasonal fee, the highest one I saw was like $200, just to let you know what other folks are doing.
I can see some of the issues that may arise, you know, like, someone may give permission to sell, sell their wares on somebody else's property. But, for example, if they're selling vegetables and they're on liquor store property.
Right.
And they're not affecting liquor store, but they're certainly affecting the, you know, the produce department, so just because you've got permission from the owner, still deciding to write the sale with a license.
Right.
And that, that's why I see, yeah, John.
Mr. Mayor, are you addressing the electrical use, power use of?
Well, the issue is, John, we, we have a vendor that sets up there, and he puts in the city power, and then, you know, he's just selling, I don't know what it is he's selling, but.
Oh, also, if I can interrupt, there's one down on the ferry dock, there's an old, um, receptacle layer, and I would imagine it's a liability there. GFO is there, it's not identified.
Those, those are all the considerations, and I think we will address them on, on their next council meeting, but I wanna think exactly, you know, my thoughts on them, and if you guys better, uh, sure, put them up. Yeah, we will, you're exactly right, John, if someone gets hurt or plug in.
Those are bolts that are tugging in there though. Not like this, the river dock, those are bolts, not food service.
We're talking, yeah, we're talking about food trucks.
Yes, they're talking bolts.
Well, again, I'm sorry, I'm getting really hard here, the mass, uh, complicated things here, so bear with me if I jump around a little bit, because I.
The only other note that I wanted to say about, from the meeting that I commissioned, is that, um, the zoning committee did not want to have a set precedent by honoring the Cologues, because their corner property is different. If their front of their house was just like their neighbor's, their setback, they wouldn't even have to have a variance, because they have a corner lot, is, why, and then the neighbors, there was no disagreement, he had no problem with it. So, we just didn't wanna make it a precedent for somebody else coming up and having an 11-foot, it was because of the corner lot.
No, I, I, when I read through that, and I had to add a 20, I couldn't figure out why you needed one, Sheriff.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving on then, um. Um, important 21, oh, that was, uh, one more. Uh, Mayor, we're gonna table that motion then on the food trucks until next meeting?
That, that is correct, we don't already have to table that.
Second.
You got a motion, and second, home favorite.
Aye.
Oh, so carried. The next is to set the date for the, we said we're gonna have an open meeting on this board launch, and we set a date for that, and I think we have to have 10 days in advance.
Oh, but it'll be a public meeting then?
Public period.
Advertise, you have to.
Public.
That's what you said, yeah, 10 days.
And we have to have 10 days notice, so that's the earliest it could be is.
But it has to go into the paper, correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we were thinking to have it before the next council meeting, but there isn't enough time, uh, and notice time.
So, there is no, there is no plans yet, or?
Yeah, there, there's just a limited set of plans and reviews and what will be there. We'll show you everything we got, John, at the meeting.
Yeah, the only, um, no, this is more like a test one, I think, if this parking lot, you know?
Yeah, that's what we're just using it for, that, no, we just park in there now. We started taking the fence off, because we certainly didn't, it wasn't good enough to play tennis on certain, because usually, it's never tennis.
Pay the rest of it, or?
What's the date?
What's that?
Are we gonna set a date?
Yeah, let us set a date, and we can discuss all that, John.
Cheryl, what are we looking at for a date, if we're 10 days out, right?
Well, it, it has to go into the newspaper 10 days ahead, and it won't be able to get into the newspaper until next Thursday, so it'll have to be 10, at least 10 days from next Thursday.
So, next Thursday, it'll hit the paper?
Yeah.
Then we'd have to wait 10 days.
Right.
Don't hit the first meeting.
It's looking like it's the first week of September. And is that a good news? Because our meeting is until, let's see if we can have it before our September meetings. Because our September meetings are, uh, September 8th and September 15th. So, we could really have it on September 1st.
Yeah, well, yeah, why can't it be 10 days from?
Because you gotta have the paper, the paper won't come out till.
Why does that, it's 8:00.
It's a central public.
Yeah, but can't you put other notices, oh?
8:00, 10 days.
All right, that's fine. Then let's make it September 1st.
Let's make it September 1st, is that what?
Yeah, it's 10:00.
September 1st.
Can I ask one question, Johnny, on your visit?
Sure.
Dec complicate things a little bit. Are you, um, this parking lot now, is that, is the city going to be, have to be compliant with, um, the zoning departments? When we have parking lots installed? Just like, just like.
With, with, John?
If a foreign citizen is putting in this parking lot, you have to apply zoning and make sure it's compliant with all the zoning, um, all the code pieces and, um.
Certainly, it'll be, it'll be engineered, it'll be, be compliant, if there's needs a handicap access or.
Well, that's right, I love whatever, whatever it is. If it's someone's year, you know, they do, they'll make sure they do that. Get it, get it right, you know? But, you know, it'll be. Just ready head up, let it get you.
Yeah, well, that's a good, good question, we'll, we'll get it.
We've got a set of time.
What's that?
September 1st, we've still got a set of time.
Yeah. 6:30?
I'm thinking 5:30.
5:30, turn it to 5:30, fine.
5:30 on September 1st, we'll have a public hearing.
All right, uh.
Could I just ask if you have the plans already, are they online, so we can review them prior to this meeting?
Uh, I don't know what we have online, I don't think anything's online.
Well, can it go online, so we can review them before the meeting?
No zip files either, they got another one on the zip file, those are hard to hold, it comes in.
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I will check with the design person, with Charlie, uh, from Arrow, if he can do it, we'll do it.
I bet, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sure he can, but I don't wanna, that's.
Because it would be nice.
Charlie, Charlie Ladup is on that, that could do it, so if we tell him to do it, I'm sure he can do it.
Who's Charlie? Who?
Charlie Ladup. Charlie Ladup with Arrow survey, yes.
Well, that's a survey though, does he do the whole plans in it?
Yes, yeah, well, he's got, he's got the plans, he can put them on for you.
Well, he's gonna have to get them signed off.
Pardon me?
He probably gonna have to get them signed off, I'm just curious.
I think Danny can do that. Dave's around.
We'll see.
Yeah, so, okay, um. Let me see, uh, with Mike. He's looking to put the flag up.
Hello. So, what I'd like to do, uh, is I'm looking for permission, um, to put up a big, uh, oversized American flag. Uh, we'd like to locate it up on the hill between the Rainier skating rink and back the hill between the skating rink and the liquor store, up on the city own property. We're thinking, like, at the top of the sliding hill, there's a nice spot, like, we built that up for the sliding, we could locate that flag there. What brought that to my mind was, I always see the Canadian flag on top of that city water tower in Canada, and we get to look at the nice maple leaf over there. And I just thought, um, with the way things are going in the country right now, and, um, a nice patriotic thing to do is let's put a flag up there that you'll see from a long distance away. And, um, I think it would look beautiful up on top of that hill.
And they're proposing to do this yourself or?
So, uh, I'm looking to, uh, raise funds, I don't want this to cost the city a dime. I'm looking to raise, uh, funds to purchase the pole, the flag, and all the material to install the flag and install a light to shine on the flag, so it can be there all night long. The pole I'm looking to put on there will be roughly 70, 75 feet tall. It'll have, um, uh, all the cables and pole is will be interior of the pole, so it won't make a clanging noise at night when the wind's blowing, and so nobody should hear. All you'll hear maybe is a little flag whip up there, which is, um, just fine, I have a thing. I've got some people that have offered already to donate stuff to this, and, uh, once I get the permission to go ahead and do it, I'll proceed.
Do you have some estimate of cost, huh?
Well, so, um, the pole itself, the one pole I'm looking at, is like $8,300.
That's it?
Yeah.
Did you say $200?
Eighty-three hundred.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yes, I wish, um, the, uh, flags, flags are actually pretty inexpensive, they're, they're less than $2,000, depends on what type of flag, what you get, which flag you get, what it's made of. The pole will be rated for, the flag on will be rated for 95 mile an hour winds. And of course, the flag will be rated more than that.
How about the foundation?
So, the foundation would be, uh, because we're gonna be close to bedrock up there.
The anchor given?
Sure, the anchor, we'll put out anchor in the rock for, we'll probably pour a stepped, uh, do a stepped, uh, foundation for it. Nice, a nice step up and a nice little, um, head for the pole to go in. And I also thought that we could maybe, uh, just make it an honor of all the Rainier residents that have served our country, so, for the flag there.
We'll take care of it after we get it put up, Mike.
So, um, actually, one of the people that has offered, and we'll see if it comes from Texas, but he offered to, um, they'd offer to donate a flag every year to place that one. But, um, as far as taking care of it, there shouldn't be much maintenance, except the new flag every year, and, um, myself, I think I could raise funds, buy a new flag every year, one way or the other.
It sounds good, like, if I really can see community projects and community involvement, and I can see this, you could kiss all that, but we can't seem to win or do against the flag.
Yeah, like, I thought half mass and all that, I don't know, something came up and.
Yeah, well, yeah, there, there's, there's, there's certain flag rules that, uh, you have to follow.
But they vary and of course, you've got Mark Lassard right here that will know exactly which flag rules that we'll need to follow. But there are certain instances where we will have to lower that to half mass.
You could, like, go up on there too with the American flag or just the American flag?
I think on this one here, you're only going to be able to put one flag on this.
Okay, okay.
No rainier, maybe, or greater than?
Well, we could fix something or anything.
Or we could just make.
Is that going to bother anything with the zoning ordinance as far as height?
I guess we'll, I guess we'll have to look into that. I think there's something else. So ours may be high of the different things. So yes, I mean.
Yeah, there might be something. Yeah, we won't be over 80 feet tall. I guess that's the rule you look at to make sure you don't exceed 80 feet. Most of the trees are, I mean, some of the trees, right in this area, 60 feet, so.
How big would your flag be?
The biggest flag that we put on there would be 20 by 30, otherwise 15 by 15.
Is that like the Perkins flag?
Yes.
Perkins. Now we understand Perkins.
We, we actually went up there the other night and my daughter-in-law brought her drone. And so we flew the drone up to 7 feet, 75 feet. And we took a video, took pictures. So I could show you where you would see this flag. And it looked pretty cool up there. Of course, of course, our Canadians will be able to see it really well. And I think we'll be able to see it, you know, from down the sand bay ways. And definitely when you're coming down the highway, they'll see it. That's one of the highest elevations for what ways, so.
So we should make a recommendation on this and then obviously we have a council meeting a week from now. So we'll get the final approval at the council meeting, but.
I'll make a recommendation.
I'll second.
A recommendation is second, I feel.
I am.
Oh, so curious. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you. Appreciate the participation in the city. Okay, moving on.
Is that, are we done?
That's it, we do. For.
Just walking by, we gave on the sidewalks there.
Yeah.
Walking by, the sidewalks, on the sidewalks.
Yep.
They're starting to use, they're entering the asphalt, so I think that's happening with plans.
I've gotten hold of many of the asked on a couple of times, but Gaddo, John, he just had the Gaddo back over there. Come back, all Gaddo. You know, that's something I'm sure if we don't get them fixed this year, we'll have to give them. They're county sidewalks again, but I'm sure we can get them thrown in on that project anyway. We have to. I know they're asking us for a little money. I think we can, you know, again, they're county sidewalks, so. But they do need to, we addressed that, I think, at the last meeting, Nick checked some things out, so. Try to get it done. Anything else? Yes, sir. Ma'am.
Hi, I don't know. It's not a formal statement. Just to vent here, I just wanted to extend a thank you to Mr. Mayor and Council and Rainier for your efforts and just positive promotion for our area and really forward-revived projects. There's some great articles and news clips of Rainier and talking about what's happening here and what's to come. And I think that's important for just our area's economic development and what it becomes if they're highly formed with activity and to know that there's stuff happening here. So it's, I think, very exciting to see.
One thing I would say, please. One other thing, one other thing I'd like to say too. We have five people running for office here. I want to appreciate that. Really glad that we have people participating in the election process. Didn't have to come to me, anybody would come, they'd come forth and it's really good that we get this participation. And again, Mr. Hydall coming in, there's nothing I appreciate more than community involvement. And that's what's going to make this, this community, community. Again, I always agree with some of the projects, some do, some don't. But it's that participation that makes it meaningful.
And that does remind you, speaking of the election, if I may, one more. The chamber will be doing a political forum of some sort to meet the candidates with some Q and A. And we're kind of playing around whether it's an in-person and a convo. There'll definitely be, definitely be some live streaming to it. So we'll be reaching out to those running for Rainier Council and trying to get them to participate. And there'll be a hundred to me for questions to, as well as something. So more on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll put it in the paper and on the radio.
Who's running for office?
Uh, we have Jennifer Lindner, Todd, Jeff McCarr, June Holden, myself. There's four policemen in the, you're running. Four policemen and myself.
Nobody's running against you? Dog.
I, I would really love to see someone that's qualified to run for mayor. I endorse it myself. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have a long journey.
I have a question.
I'll second the question.
This ability, ability points. There is a 25, 25 feet of the air reach of the adjacent developed lots, whichever is less. Are desks included in the setback?
Well, I mean, can you answer that? I think anybody here, something about 25 feet in the setback.
It has to be, yes. And it's, yes, included in the setback.
Yes, it is.
Are you sure?
Not positive. It's a structure.
And this is the 25 feet on the rear property mass? Is it, is it 10 feet on both sides?
It's 10 feet.
10 feet on the side.
Yeah.
It's a 25 is rare.
In the rear.
Well, it's different for different sides.
35 feet or the adjacent, whichever is less, we get.
Somebody building a big deck?
I don't know, older would be, but I can look in the, I can look in my.
You know, it's really important if we try to, if we do some of these, at least get a variance so we know where this stuff is because when we start trying to do a utility expansion of the street or something else, you know, as we get.
I know sheds are, but I said, I'm then built this shed right over top of the gas and power line.
So my question is for setback, who's desk? Department of Energy has attached your house. We can, I can find that out. Look in my, pull the, I can see.
If nothing else, can we get a motion, John?
I got one.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
And a few people asked me about our dock down here by Sharon Falls. They were thinking if we could fix it up and have dock rentals there. And I think you'd be a good idea.
That's a great idea. We've already got the price of the, of the docks. So that's something we can discuss at the council meeting. We talked about it and I think that's how we need to go for weapons.
Yeah, well, it's not so much as both rental, both rental spot. It's a spot where people that come in and park their boats and come and do their business.
People wanted to rent them for the summer.
No, the only, I always ask for the B is on the big place on here. That would get passed. That would have to wait. For after 14 days. But that dock there is just going to be.
It's because that's a good idea to get some docks out there. Would we rent them or they use them or whatever?
Probably $300 a piece, yeah.
So that's, that's another full discussion.
There's an ordinance against it. You know that, Bob.
Yeah, you can't, you can't park it overnight. You don't know. So. You know, you just looked at, get docks for, for, for day use basically. And we're checking only about $3,500 a piece or something like that.
Yeah, $3,500 to $5,000.
I think at the time, I think at the time we looked at it, we were close to our budget. We'd never, we, that's one that we'd never exceeded our budget at the end year. We've always had a balanced budget. So some of that stuff we look to see.
He's got a pile.
Okay, now, now.
One other quick thing, unless I'm missing something. I have not found that the minutes of May 12th meeting was never approved. The minutes are out there, but I've never, I've not seen anything where they were approved of months of May 12th.
That's a committee of the whole meeting and the council doesn't approve the committee the whole meeting minutes. They only approve the regular council meetings.
It's a motion.
A recommendation.
Right.
The next meeting we have is when they apply for things approved. This meeting here, everything is just recommended for. So it will be that if I've ever seen a call, they get recommended, that's from May, so.
No, it's like a committee of the whole meeting and those don't have, those are not, don't have to be approved. That's, that's just the way the rules work because there's no motions being passed and.
Yeah, just for the odd interest, a meeting in the hall, we ask for recommendation, motions for recommendation. Then we act on it, just like I said, Mr. Hydall here. We'll recommend it and consider it, but the final approval, the only approval comes at the council meeting next Tuesday, so. Usually they can carry it, but it gives us a little time to think about things. And if you want to change them, then we can. Okay, with that said, recommendation, a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
We have a recommendation and second all, I feel. I, I, so here. Thanks, everybody.